Call to order, City Council meeting, July 10th at 5:30 PM. Susan, would you please take the call?
Mr. Halbison?
Present.
Councilor Raja, here.
Present.
Councilor Axon?
Here.
Mary Lane?
Here. The council looks for a motion to adopt the agenda. We have a couple of changes, additions, excuse me. So we do have a correction under Stephanie, which is in front of you, for the CTC network enhancement. That will be changed. A couple additions under myself. Number two, we're going to schedule a joint meeting with the Chisholm Hiving Airport Authority for August 19th at 6:00 PM. We need to add the temporary liquor license for St. Basil Serpian Orthodox Church, which is in front of you. And number four will be scheduled special meeting for improvements to the arena. So with those, that one correction and the three additions, I'd look for a motion to approve the vote. Ah, will we just do that? I'd look for a motion to adopt the agenda.
I need a motion.
Thank you, Travis. This is for, thank you, Jed. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If you care, please. Pledge allegiance if you would.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone home that's going to be watching a little bit later. The communication system in Virginia is down, so we are recording. But we will be playing right after the meeting is over. We will start with public participation. Darlene Salo, good evening. Would you please come up and adjust the counsel? Good evening, Darlene.
Good evening. Yes, I am hearing regards to the property and picnic tables that are across from the property of the county road on East Lake Street. For the, I, my property would be a 4,000 and fifth apartment. And my county road comes between the canopies and picnic tables and my front property that's up north. And the problem with that, that I foresee is that I think that the money that was spent, and I'm not sure where the money came from, would have been elsewhere spent at a different location. We have a few different locations in town. And my reason behind that is, maybe the city attorney could help us with this, is that I know in other cities when this has been placed in front of people's property, it had to be removed because it's not child-friendly. And what happens is that children run out onto the road and there's a hill going down to the lake. And it doesn't work. So if the veterans' intent was to make this for young families to enjoy, it's not going to happen. It's a liability for the county and the city. And I foresee that as a big issue because across the street isn't my house. And my house isn't there yet in my retirement home. I own the adjacent property that I'm going to sell to my grandson to have my little house there. So that I foresee as a problem. I think that the disc golf course would be a great place because you have parking and outhouse. They have no covered shelters at all. Turnovers that come into the community bring money into this community. They stay at the motel, they spend money downtown, our bars, our liquor stores, the kids play, and it brings more and more tournaments in. And I know when I got this up before, it seemed people, they said, "That's just because you have a grandson that plays." Well, that's part of the reason it is. But he plays all over the United States, and so do these other people. So it brings money and it generates money instead of a liability. Or there's the park, or there's the old land. There's other places where I think it could have been better. It would be used, and it would be used better. Because I think where it's added, it promotes late-night activity for things that we have in the past, even with benches, but aren't so good. We have drug deals there, we have cars that park there 24 hours a day. I've had things missing from when my husband passed, way out of my garage, which was odd because for all the years that we didn't live there, lived across the lake, we never locked anything up and never got a problem. Now there's issues. So there's that also. I just think it could have been better used. I don't know. And another thing, the money that came in for cars, not that my husband had lots of them, but it went to the community foundation. And I know the last wish in his heart would not to have that money across the street where we were at our retirement home. And I know this part shouldn't matter, but I'm going to mention it because I sent $14,000 taking down trees and getting rid of light out of the yard to put a home in there. And now I have canopies and picnic tables without view for where my house was going to go. But that shouldn't matter, I did that. But I do think it's a big liability for the community, for the county. I haven't talked to the county yet, but and I don't really know why the DNR would, that's another thing, would even let you. It's one thing to trim trees, but to pave trees out, I know you can't do it at the lake. And you can't trim cactails and all of this stuff because of the habitat for fish and animals and stuff. So I think in now, it wasn't a good choice. I think that there is a liability as far as the county and the city with the lake. I know years ago, when there was a fishing pier there, they took the fishing pier out because of the two-year-old that almost drowned because parents were dropping their kids off to fish there. And while I didn't really feel like maybe sitting all the time, but they did have a two-year-old that ended up in the Hiving Hospital that they had to resuscitate. But I'm finding the public has short memories because it's not in front of their property. So therefore, I'm retired, and I don't know if I want to be a keeper of that property every time something doesn't work out. So I think that you need to look at those things. And benches, one thing about a bench, people come and sit, they read for an hour or two, and they move on. No problem, no problem at all. When you have picnic tables and canopies, you have trouble. You have trouble 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And then Chisholm has big events. We have Dr. Raymond Days, we have the Fourth of July, we have Labor Day, we have all of this stuff. And, um, and those are the times, I would think, when the trouble would most be. But like I said, another thing, too, we have a veterans' memorial up at the Discovery Center that is just gorgeous. By no means, by, we mean to. I mean, that to me makes absolutely no sense. And don't get me wrong, I love veterans. My dad was a veteran, my father-in-law, my brother, and my nephew's serving his fifth tour in the world to keep us all safe. I don't think we need another veterans' memorial. And the three veterans that did volunteer their time, I know who they are, I don't know them real, real well. But I do know, I tried to get information. I was invited to the Discovery Center. I went and I was never so embarrassed in my life. So that's why I wore a dress. Because when I wore shorts there, I got told maybe I should wear a dress, and I would have got a little further. So I think that needs to be cleaned up by them. But anyway, the veterans I know have never talked about that. But that, I couldn't get any information. I don't know if it was tax money, I don't know if it was foundation money. I have no idea.
All right, done. So five minutes that we allow for the public.
Well, thank you for your time, and I, I hope that you give this some thought. Okay? All right.
Thank you, Julie. Uh, the only, Brian, do you want to say anything as far as liabilities or anything? The only thing I'm going to say is that this was brought to the council in the summer of 2022. It was presented by the Chisholm Beautification Association, and the veterans just assisted in the build along with the union. This was all brought before us, I think, once or twice, before, you know, giving us information, before it was passed, approved by the council. I did ask that that be pulled and set in front of you, so you just do have those minutes. They're a little vague, but just give the description on there.
Mayor, one more thing, too. Um, my husband died in 2021. In 2020 and the spring of 21, the beautification was at my Hiving Street when my, my yard, two people were
We are going to move on, Darlene, and I'm sorry, I can't comment. Nobody can comment on a conversation that you had with somebody else.
Okay.
That's actually a state of Minnesota parcel. I don't know, I've been working with them. They own the land.
Yeah, and Mayor, from a liability standpoint, I'm not intimately familiar with the area. If the concern is children running out into the street, same could be said of any park or any recreation area. We'd have to take a look at it. And I can drive by, take a look at it, and I can issue a little bit of a better opinion to the city through administrators, grab up.
And the lake, the lake walk is there. It is heavily, um, pleased to, and now our Public Safety Building's right there. I don't think we're going to have any problems. I live right down the block from this gal. I don't foresee any problems.
Okay, moving on. Start with council reports. Councilor Olivera, good evening.
Good evening. Um, I attended the Chisholm Beautification Society meeting last week. I went to the Public Safety Building Open House. And then we have a garden meeting next Wednesday, July 17th, at 5:00 PM at the Baptist Church. And then we have a Lake Street Market, July 18th, Lake Street, from 3:00 AM.
Looking forward to that.
Where's that going to be held? Just downtown?
Yep, just, yup, downtown.
Thank you, Councilor. Mikla Raja is absent this evening, but she did ask that I read a report for her. She would just like everyone to know that she attended HRA meeting, Rams Board meeting, and the Public Safety Building Open House. At the Rams Board meeting, thanks to our support, she was honored to be one of the nominees to fill one of the vacant seats. Before the meeting, she had the opportunity to speak with many members individually and had some great conversations with folks from across the range. She also spoke with the board as a whole before they made the decision, and she is proud to say that she was appointed to complete a term ending December 31st, 2024, and may be eligible to run for reelection to that seat depending on whether she is reelected to her current city council position. And she looks forward to working with the Rams Board. The board is currently on their summer break and will not meet again until September 26. Shayan did want to give a quick background on Rams for anyone's information. The Range Association of Municipalities and Schools Organization represents more than 155,000 residents and 69 public sector units of government, including 27 cities, 15 public school districts, and 27 townships in the 13,000 square mile Tachman Assistance Area of Northeast Minnesota. As an organization, Rams has represented, represented the interests of the Iron Range Region for 85 years. So she apologizes for missing the meeting and thanks you all. Councilor Vaki?
Good evening.
Good evening. We have a packed agenda, so I brought water for Jim. You're welcome. See, I was thinking about you. The only thing I'll say, yeah, the only thing I'll, I'll say is the Public Safety Building. I mean, yeah, I don't even have words to say how amazing it is and the fact that we did it and we didn't have hiccups, we didn't have problems. Everyone supported it. It just speaks volumes to what this community does and feels about it. And of course, thank you to Steph because she did all the, all the hard work. Not, her team helped, but, uh, but she's our leader, so. So, uh, good job, and, um, on to the arena.
Excellent.
Whole team.
Thank you, Travis. Councilor Paul, good evening.
Good evening. Yes, Ms. Mary, I'm probably taking Larry's info here, but the Chisholm cleanup is July 8th through the 12th, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, 7:00 to 3:00, right, Larry? And then Tuesday, Thursday, 7:00 to 6:45? Or, yeah, 6:45 I have. And then Wednesday, July 31st at 6:00 PM, there's Bingo Pistols and Purses at Valentini's. It's a Chamber of Commerce fundraiser, so it sounds like it's going to be a great, great event. Strong Towns, the action team, will be assisting with city cleanup for anyone who is physically unable to get items to the city garage. And the person in contact that you guys can contact is Jen?
Giuliani.
Thank you, at 262-909-6634. And her number was on the poster, so it's okay. Meetup and Chowdown sponsored by the United Way of Northeastern Minnesota. Um, I just want to let everybody know, they are still serving lunches for kids 18 and under from 12 to 1 at the Kiwanis Park. So if you guys are hungry or you need a lunch for that day, head on down there and, um, pick up a lunch, a free lunch. Also, there's some, um, a couple entities in our community that are hiring. 30 West is hiring gym attendants. The Minnesota Discovery Center is hiring the board of directors or volunteers. If anybody needs, looking for a job as a banquet cook. And then IRRB, I don't even know if they leave the B on there anymore, IRRR, is having a community development resource workshop on July 16th. And I was thinking about, uh, if it was okay with everybody. I think anybody can in the community. It's in-person and Zoom. To learn about different ways that we can help our community build with, um, grants and things like that, so, yeah. That's all I have.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, bro. Councilor Olivera, good evening.
Good evening. I also attended the Public Safety Building Open House. And it's a wonderful building, everything turned out nicely. Had many site visits out at Redhead, and we had Redhead community meetings. And then we also had a special council meeting on 21st. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Marty.
Okay, obviously it was a very busy month since the last time we had met. You know, the Public Safety Building Open House, so it was fabulous, it was well-attended. We had a lot of people from the public, heard nothing but good things. Again, it's really good to be in there, you know, fire and ambulance. We've been busy trying to move apparatus and gear and tools, and it's just been a whirlwind, and it's, uh, it's nice to be in there. And it's really nice to actually be through this project and into it. And now we can actually start making it, you know, home. So our last council meeting resulted that night with a bunch of damage around town with hail. Following week, we had a natural disaster, pretty much, with that rainy event, eight inches in a couple hours. So, um, you know, individuals obviously had some extreme issues. People had some terrible outcomes. We appreciate a lot of patience with the people at home. City Council, thanks for meeting with me right after that so we could figure out what we were doing. Larry, your crew was fabulous, you know, fire department was tremendous. They were out the entire time in the storm, waiting through basements, helping people pump as they needed. And, um, you know, it just goes to show what this community does and to help each other out, as long as you reach out and ask, you know, there's always someone there to help. But I do want to point out that my phone was ringing off the hook for the entire week about Larry's and his crew. You know, it's just, uh, we just hired an individual, and I got a glowing review, you know, above and beyond for an individual. And, um, you know, obviously the leadership will be on, bringing them out, is showing them the ropes. You know, it definitely, uh, is, is good to hear. So thank you, Larry, you're doing a great job. And Stephanie, you and your team did a great job with the Public Safety Building. And like Travis said, on to the next one. So, moving on, ambulance director, Tiffany, good evening.
Good evening. I, uh, I've been pretty busy myself, I'm not horribly ready, prepared for this night. I'll make it pretty quick. Just to follow up with that, unfortunately, that rain on the emergency manager side of things, I've been working with the county and, um, and working a little bit with FEMA to try and get some of the citizens that qualify for it help and hopefully to get the entire city qualified to, uh, receive some funds to help clean up. So that has been ongoing. Lot of paperwork setting up. Hopefully FEMA will be in town to look at a couple things here within the next few weeks. That's ongoing. We've also been really busy before July 3, out in Side Lake, standby for the Firecracker 5K. That went really well, had a lot of help, that was awesome. The open house, as we all know, was very well-attended. That was, that was fun for us. And the move-in has gone very well. It's, it's gone well, everything's worked out. We've responded, we responded to our first EMS call for the ceremony for the open house from the open house. So we got that on camera, everything went well there. I was very nervous recording because that's usually when something exciting happens, right? But, yeah, we had, I think, the two nights ago was the first time we had something in the dorms. So the Public Safety Building is much appreciated and already getting quite a good use. So all is well, and we're good. Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany. City building official zoning, Mandy, good evening. City engineer, Jim?
You sure you want to? Hey, will you put her just?
My preamble, I'll bet.
Listen, no sermons, we're just straight business.
Just one final appeal on our, and I'd like Larry and Mandy to pitch in what I do miss on this. Regarding our lead service line, I think there's been some misunderstanding according to Denise in our building department of just what this is. And it's only inventory at this point. There's no obligation for the property owner to do anything with their service other than we need in order to comply with the Department of Health to inventory their service line from the main to the house. And what we're asking, and we've had a fantastic participation so far. We're over, I think, we're over 75% in the neighborhood, about 77% participation. And we have to be turning in that inventory to the Department of Health Monday, I believe it is 15. So we're trying to get as close to 100% as we can. We know there's going to be a number that we can't get. But with those, we have to turn them in as unknown at this point. And then as we find out in the future, we can be updating that inventory. But we need to turn in those inventory, and we need that information for people such that if they want to utilize funding in the future, if the property owner decides or somewhere down the line it's required that that service line be replaced by participating in the inventory, they're eligible for 100% funding. It would cost them nothing to get their water service replaced. But it is necessary for them to get the information to us so we can get it passed on to the state in terms of doing that inventory. So my appeal tonight is to those people who have not yet responded, if they would do so, probably the quickest and easiest way now is to contact Denise, our utility billing clerk, at 254-7905. And if people can look at their water pipe coming into the meter, up to the meter, not what's flung inside their house, but to the meter, if they know how to identify that, they can just call Denise and give her that information, she will record it. If they want to take a picture and email it to Denise, which is City's website, we have Denise's email address as well. If they want to just email that picture of it, then we can identify it, we can get it logged in, so we can submit it. Or if they call Denise, she will try and find out when they're available so we can have city staff stop and, uh, take a look at it and get that information for them. Denise and Christie have been putting in time after their normal four o'clock time. They've been staying, I think, till about 7:00, making phone calls to people that we don't have the information from yet. So we are pursuing as aggressively as we can, but any additional help we can get from those that have not responded, we would certainly appreciate it. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks.
And Jim, I've got one question for you quick.
Sure.
Just on the highway in front of the Public Safety Building. Have we talked to the county about, did this feeling change in signage?
Yeah. I have not yet. Okay. I have.
You're going to raise it to 55? No, one slower. Public Works, Larry, evening.
Thank you, I'll be quick. And to Jed's question, um, there's no additional signing required for emergency vehicles because there's a thousand feet, um, in both directions. And I was talking with Public Works and sign people when they came and did the stops and, and her stuff. So we're all compliant there. Yeah, the system, there is a system available, it's like $35,000. And it's highly maintenance, it doesn't work, it's not very successful, but that would be up to the city. But there's no requirement or there wouldn't be a change from San Luis County.
Okay. It's the city wanted to put up a sign, the, just that yellow sign?
No.
Can't do that?
Can't do it.
No?
Yeah, it's their right of ways, it's their rules, it's same for everyone, that type of thing. Yeah. Uh, so then, um, and I have, you know, I have contacts if somebody wanted to reach out for them. Um, the lead line survey that Jim spoke of is wrapping up Monday. We appreciate everyone's help. The numbers we're seeing are on, are blown away, like nobody ever responds the way Chisholm responded to this survey and stuff, so it's great, we really appreciate it. We're getting tired from elderly folks or people that are unable, and we're sending staff over to do that for them even. So like you said, you can just call City Hall. We got a couple days left. It just doesn't end on Monday, we have to submit to the Department of Health. But, you know, this, this will continue, you know. And then once we get through the identification process, then we'll move on to step number two. And it'll be notifications, so we'll send out notifications for folks. So this is just step one, and this process, we'll work through it. And we're mandated to do so, and we're, and we're on schedule with Monday, so. So we're going to get that in Monday. Our dust control was applied today to our, um, you know, say our gravel, some of our gravel alleys or streets and, uh, campground and stuff like that. That's an annual thing we do, it's, uh, it's competitively good and everything. We wrapped up gaining for the year, we're a little short staff, with our regular employees that, you know, company, our seasonal employees. So we just did the crosswalks and some parking, uh, stuff like that. So we wrapped up a little bit early on that this year. There's two days left of the city writing up this tomorrow, you know, 7:00 AM to 6:45 PM. So it's a full, almost full hours tomorrow, and then Friday is another 7:00 to 45 or 3:00. So, so it's two days left to go on that. And, um, then if you notice around town, the elm trees are dying. And, um, this, this is just kind of, it's just coming to, to where it's gotten bad enough to start talking about it. I had a forester come, so I'm getting educated on it. It's actually kind of normal. It's going to be disturbing to a lot of people. They're dying at an alarming rate, and we can't even keep up getting them down. So we're like prioritizing on the most dangerous ones. And we're even, like, when we take a tree down, we chip it, it's completely gone, it's gone. But now we're even just felling them and leaving them in the lane, we'll get them later because we can't even keep up. So there's a lot of elm trees dying, and they're all going to die throughout the city, basically. So you can see them out the window here, you can see them out the City Hall windows across there, and private property there, and our property, they're all over the city, surrounding the lake, so. A lot of elm trees dying.
You see why?
Yeah, it's normal. It's actually like Mother Nature kind of punishing herself, I guess, and this is what I'm learning. There's the Dutch elm disease that you hear of, um, not yet confirmed in an area, but it's probably here. It's obviously here with the forester coming. And then there's a, there's a bark beetle. And then stress from the last few years of awkward weather, you know, droughts, flood, drug flood, you know, so, stress. So multiple things, not good on elm trees. Oh, yeah, yeah, the fog ceiling you see on the causeway and on the front of the road from McDonald's over towards, uh, from the, they'll do it there by the, uh, by the hotel. It's, uh, so that's, that's all good for the economy that's going on, too. So getting all our work done for winter comes. All right? That's all I have. She said it's an agenda. Thank you.
Thanks, Larry. Sea Parks Trails, right there, right there, Bridget, good evening.
Good evening, Larry and council. I just have a few updates and mostly it's numbers. Uh, I meant to have to use the comparison from 2023 to 2024 for the youth center in May, and I didn't, I didn't crunch the numbers at that point. But it is good news, in this past school year, we had 706 unique visits to the youth center, whereas the previous year it was 389. So that was a large increase. There's a lot of fourth graders coming in, and I attribute that to them being exposed to the youth center during summer rec program and learning that it's, it's a place that they can come. So, um, that's good news. And then CSRP, Chisholm Summer Rec Program, this year, we're down just a little from last year, but I'm pulling the numbers from the end of the summer, how many total? Which we had 124 full paying, um, full, um, coming all seven weeks. Right now, we're at 116, and we keep having kids add-on right now. So there's a lot of good field trips left. So spread the word to families that now is still a good time to join for the, for the rest of the summer. And then the campground has been really full the last couple weekends, so that's really great things, too. Busy there, the seasonal staff that we have onsite, Bangy and Jocelyn have been doing a great job juggling the campground along with other places throughout the town that juggling the campground along with other places throughout the town that they are working on. So they've been doing a good job. And we did have our Department of Health inspection at the campground, which also went while I don't have the report back, but it didn't look like he marked down very much at all, so.
Excellent. Thank you, Bridget.
Thank you.
Library supervisor, Katie?
All right, good evening, everyone. We're wrapping up the summer reading program. We're in our last week with two hundred and three kids and they signed up. We're drawing prizes on Monday next week. Tomorrow we have a very exciting program coming to Chisholm. Jackie Fallon is a parakeet falcon researcher and we'll be bringing her live birds up and close. What was I saying? Sorry. Live birds for an up and close look at several types of raptors. The program is going to start at ten AM and it's actually going to be at the senior center because we're just a little concerned about space issues at the library. So we're anticipating a big turnout and Jackie's encouraging people to bring cameras. And this is a program that's funded through the Arrowhead Library System. So just a thank you to the staff at ALS for supporting our community with these events. And thank you to the senior center for letting us use their space. Following week, we're going to be tie dyeing in the park outside the library. We just ask the kids to bring some white something to dye and then all their supplies will be provided. The ice cream truck will also be joining us during that time. And the program will run from ten to one o'clock. And that's a Wednesday. And then looking into August, we have Willow that is going to come visit the library. And she is an artist from Rochester, Minnesota. And she has a studio and gallery in Lake City. And she received a creative individual grant from the Minnesota State Arts Board. And she's going to be visiting us on August eighth from ten to one. And she's actually going to create a twenty-four by twenty-four inch painting of our historic library and engaging the community in the process. So she'll be outdoors, looking at the library, painting it. It sounds like it usually takes like three and a half hours to complete the painting. And she's encouraging discussion and engagement with the community while she's painting. She's also going to be bringing color pages for folks, just to engage in their own creative moment while watching a live action, so. And then at the end, the painting will be donated to the library.
Very cool.
So we're looking forward to that. Don't be mad. Yeah. Lastly, I just wanted to provide you an update on the mural wall in the full park. Hopefully, hopefully you've noticed that we've been doing some painting and some cleanup in the park. Larry and his crew did some tree trimming for us and it really opened up space. It looks a lot more inviting. We got the community hoppers planted. It looks like we had a really stunning hoppers joined in. It was wonderful. So we got those hoppers planted, the city flowers are planted. The downtown revitalization, we committed that last week, just to kind of discuss what our next steps are. So QR codes are going to be going live in the park next week. And really the goal of the QR codes in that space is just to kind of create an interactive space for the community, an interactive experience. I'll invite people to really just visit the park, be in the space, reimagine the mural and share their feedback and ideas as we continue to just cultivate this vision of what we want our mural to be and how we want to reimagine the space. And so then our next steps beyond the QR codes, we'll be doing a call to artists so that we have the goal of rolling that out in August and then hopefully have a spring twenty twenty-five mural unveil.
Awesome. Amazing. Lots of positive remarks about dust space. You know, individuals that even don't even stop there, just the way it looks and driving by and the flowers. You know, I get a lot of compliments, you know, to share, so.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
City attorney, Brian?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I don't get to say this very often, but agenda only. I can answer questions if the council has any, but otherwise it's just agenda.
Questions? City clerk, treasurer, administrator, Stephanie, good evening.
Good evening. Just to touch, I mean, lots of people already have, but on the public safety building, it was a great day. The community really came out. I was there last night. It was really good to see, see the departments in their space. And it just seems like it's going to be a really good fit for everybody and really happy for each department that gets to utilize that building for years to come. They have had obviously some sacrifices on where they currently have been working out of and it's just exciting for them to be able to, to move into there and keep responding like they always have. So thanks to everybody that was involved in that. Also, I want to touch on when we did have, obviously, the few storms that we've had come through. Just really impressed with, like Adam said, the way that our departments responded. Larry was above and beyond, his, his department was. It was, the fire department was out there side by side to try to do the best we can. And thanks to Tiffany for moving forward on the emergency manager side to see what we can do to assist the damage that was presented to the community, so. Thank you for that unfortunate event, but hopefully we can move forward on, on what happened here. The other thing I do have written down and has brought up a couple of times is today I was working pretty much all day on the arena curly club. So we have funding pretty much secured for that project. So just working with the state to get to the point of being a signed contract with them in IRR. So that is the next thing that we will be, be moving towards and we're pretty much ready to go on it. So if there's any other questions for me.
Moving on.
Council, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda, which consists of list of bills, communications, May seventh, Chisholm Parks Trail Rec Meeting Minutes, June third, planning commission meeting minutes, Bruce Mine Headframe Park and Trailhead Project. See minutes of previous city council meetings, there is a correction. First, that is June twelfth, not June tenth. And on page nine, there was a correction. Councilor Fulton was accidentally listed as absent at the very end of it. So next will be the June twenty-first, twenty twenty-one emergency meeting minutes payroll and overtime. So with the corrections to the June twelfth regular meeting, I'd look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Jed.
For it.
Thank you, Travis. Any further discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. No unfinished business. We will move on to new business. Mandy, good evening.
Good evening, Council. On July first, the planning commission held a meeting and they unanimously approved two amendments to ordinances. And both of the ordinances are concerning shipping containers. And what the planning commission did approve is two ordinances to allow shipping containers in the industrials. There are some performance standards attached to that. They are, so there's nine of them listed in, in the ordinance in front of you. The ordinance was published in the Minnesota date of the term. On June nineteenth, so previous to the meeting. We did have the board form at the planning commission that did approve the two amendments unanimously and nobody in the audience commented on them. So this will be the first reading of the amendments. And the second meeting will be at the next council, with your approval tonight.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
And Mandy? And this might, you might have to ask the city attorney too. I just want to, so my question is, before you hold a public hearing, and add or introduce a city ordinance, does it, does it need to go through the council first after the attorney and the planning commission review it?
I believe it goes to the planning commission. It is published in the paper for the planning commission to hold a public hearing. And then it goes to council for final approval for its first and second reading.
And then do we have another hearing after that or no?
No.
Not that I'm aware of right now.
It just doesn't seem like it should have came to us before it to even move forward to go with it, you know, I don't understand.
The planning commission holds all the public hearings for testaments to chapter eleven in the ordinance. And then they are an advisory committee to the council.
Mayor, could I speak to this just a little bit? So the process would be if this would have come to the council, we actually would have had to refer it to planning and zoning for their consideration so that they could advise us as to how it would affect other aspects of our, our zoning ordinances. And as to the, the hearing, the reason that we have two separate readings is so that the public has an opportunity to see this and, and to know that the next reading will come at our next meeting so they can appear at that next meeting and voice concerns or issues that they may have. So the, the two readings is intended to try to, to protect the public and allow them an opportunity to comment.
That makes a lot more sense. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Mandy, can you, can you just quickly, aside from the industrial park, where else is it on the industrial?
Our industrial park is seen in the industrial zone.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions, concerns?
I have a concern, not a question. For the, the city, for on page eighteen, where it says that no accessory building shall be used for residential, residential or dwelling purposes. I guess, you know, we're, we're getting to that point where we were talking about green spaces and small spaces and people are looking into container homes now. And I think that if we limit that to say, no, we cannot allow that in our city, I, I, I think that these little fifty-foot lots, you know, people wouldn't be able to do, have that. And I just don't understand.
Currently, the state building code prohibits shipping containers as dwellings right now, so we wouldn't be able to allow anywhere for, for that use.
Could also, this is in reference to the industrial zone, so you wouldn't put a residential home in industrial zone? Right, but you're basically saying only shipping containers can be in industrial zone. And that's my concern. Because I, I, I feel that a shipping container should be, that should be used. Why, I don't, I don't understand why it couldn't be anywhere. Obviously, you'd have to get a permit or something, but.
Well, you think it should be allowed in residential?
I think it should be. Because if you've got a two hundred foot lot, you know, or if you wanna, if, if Minnesota does pass a law that we can have shipping container homes eventually.
I think at that time, then you could bring it back where the council could direct the planning to revisit it. Yeah. And I think it'd be hard to leave that window without the state actually having something on there.
And Mayor, could I comment just briefly? The other process that would be available is there is a variance process. So any rule or restriction or requirement that's imposed by the, well, generally speaking, the rules and requirements that are imposed by the zoning corp, the code, any resident can come and file an application for variance. In this case, and specifically with, you know, say a shipping container residence, if it were permitted by the state of Minnesota as a permissible use. This is something that in, in my experience, and it's not vast, but in my experience, it's something the city would probably want to keep a little bit of a closer eye on using that variance process so that instead of just showing up with something that may be substandard or that may be dangerous to the health and safety of the folks that would be living in it, somebody would, would bring forward a plan and say, here's what, here's what's happening. Here's how I'm going to accommodate all my daily living tasks. Here's what's going to happen. And then the city can evaluate that and approve it or deny it. But it allows us to keep a little bit of a closer eye on, on those types of activities.
And then what about, is it Minnesota law that you can't have a shipping container she shed? I'm just asking. I mean, you can't, a living dwelling place, obviously you said, but what about? I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there. Because right now you're, we're putting provisions on it and it's.
Yep, the, the ordinance on dust state that, that no accessory building should be used for residential purposes, so. That is.
So is.
I couldn't allow a shipping container as a she shed in the residential zone anyway to how the current ordinance is written. This only affects the industrial zone.
So you'd want, you'd, you'd want to go to a planning commission meeting and say, I'd like for you to look at the residential portion of this ordinance because I think that a shipping container should be allowed. And then they would make a decision and then refer it to us for our final decision. But this is only about the industrial part of it. This isn't, so you could still go to the planning commission, quarter residential, and then we go through the same process. I think that makes sense.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong. One part of this portion is the definition of what a shipping container is, right?
And added to the ordinance.
And added to the ordinance, okay? Then the second portion is a city ordinance and land use just for the industrial park only. So, and it's, you cannot have a shipping container in this ordinance here on residential. So we're adding two things today.
We're adding the definition.
Definition. And adding this.
The text amendment in the industrial zone.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
So it's two separate.
Yeah, I make a motion in support of any ordinances, one five three five oh four, I'm one five three five oh seven.
Thank you, Jed. Your support?
Second.
Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jim?
Wait, isn't it two?
The next meeting will be the next reading.
This one?
He just made a motion to amend both.
Oh, do we have to do them separate?
Technically, no. So, so the action that the council would take tonight, it, it could be a formal or informal action, is essentially to acknowledge the first reading. Just to say that we've, we've presented to the council one time. So we, we didn't vote.
Vote on this at all?
Yep, the vote was not to approve or not approve the, the change. It was simply to acknowledge the first reading.
Then there'll be a second reading and then it goes into.
But I thought they were two separate. That's where, that's where the confusion is for me. It's two separate.
There is, yep.
So we were just approving the definition right now?
No. My, my recollection was a motion referenced.
One five three point zero four.
Basically, basically to acknowledge both first readings.
Because they're two different city ordinance numbers.
So will we just approve the reading, the first reading?
First reading of all.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Jim?
Good evening. Mayor, members of the council, I, he just moved forward. The first, if you're based, excuse me, if you're based in twenty twenty-one, we're going to have years to let you approve the time specifications and bring gathered to the council for our heart. This is not a city project, Stephanie, are you?
Yeah, I will. Yep, let me talk about that a little bit. So we had community members have come to the council, I believe, a year ago, separate that timeframe, to look for support to move forward on this project. They were able to fundraise the funds to be able to, to implement this project. Since it will be on city property, we, we will receive the funds from the volunteer group and we will bid it on state bank contracting. So it will come through the city as a bill through, excuse me, through state bank contracting. We will receive the money through grants to pay for this project. So that's why it's going this way, because it's cleaner all around for the city to be able to be the one that bids it. They were, the money was already fundraised through different entities. So some of the money will come through community foundation, some of the money will come through Iron Range Resources. And we were the fiscal on those, on those things. So we will kind of take the project over at this point as far as bidding it out and making sure that everything is followed through the city procedure for, for, for the bidding process. So that's why, this is kind of the stage that we're in right now.
So basically, bottom line is we're serving as a fiscal agent, so we have to, as explained, we have to take over the management of it at this point, so.
And we will be responsible for it once it's built.
Right. So we've added the resolution. We're planning to bid that first Wednesday in August and bring it to the council then the following, get your first meeting on the fourteenth in August. With that, we would recommend approval of resolution all seven twenty-four dash two three for approving flat respects and ordering ad advertisement for bids for the Thomas Sully Memorial Heart. I'll maybe have to answer your questions.
Thank you, Travis.
Second.
Thank you, April. Any further discussion? Marty, you got a question?
Marty, you got a question?
Yes, one question for Jim, so I want to check on the vertical clearance of the arch. They show up in center, I just want to make sure they have their clearance on the sides for...
It extends beyond the sidewalks, I think.
Yeah, I'm not sure where the traffic lane is. It looks okay, but I think it's a 17 D3 or something is the requirement that, maybe that has the clearance requirements, to make sure we don't, you know, a little too low in the...
Right, they get off in the first half.
Yeah, right, right, right. We don't need that. Good, thank you.
Any further questions? All those in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. True to page 38, 39, what we have here is Resolution 0724-4, awarding the bid and awarding the contract for the 2024 street alley reconditioning project. As you see in the resolution on page 39, we received two bids. The base, including basically all the alleys plus the two streets, alternate number one was the paving of the Ironman parking lot. And as you see, two bids, 223,800 dollars from Masabi Bytunis, page young contractors, and the other bid at 247,357 dollars for total base bid. Going back to page 38, I provided for you the construction costs based on Masabi Bytunis' bid, but also then provided you with the estimated assessment revenues on the base bid. There are no assessment revenues for the Ironman Park. And as you see, the estimated net cost to the city will be awarded on the basis of the bid, whether it's a base bid or base bid plus that alternate. But if we were to receive an award on the basis of that base bid plus the Ironman alternate number one, the net cost to the city is going to be about $139,000. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions. I passed on to Adam when he stopped in my office today. I actually had two different calls from citizens, one Greg Choakran up on 7th Avenue and 7th Street Northwest that thought they were still in the project, they were included in feasibility study but not in the specs. And then also from Rene Olson on 204th Street that thought they were originally in the project as well. And they were very disappointed that they weren't in the project, and so I encouraged them to call Steph anytime 24/7 or the council at that time. To encourage them to continue the program next year and to lend their support for getting their project done. So with that, I would recommend the award of the contract per Resolution 0724-54 to Masabi Bytunis. And with your consent, I would recommend award of the base bid plus add alternate number one, totally 223,800 dollars. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Jim.
Obviously, we were worried that we might have to cut this down from what we were going at, so this is really good news. And I would agree that we would, should include the Ironman parking lot with that cost. It's a lot lower than what we anticipated, and since they have everything here, you know, it's a...
Actually, and, excuse me, Mayor, regarding Larry and I have been talking a little bit with Masabi Bytunis, and I think there's, we think we can save some money there rather than digging out or milling and overlaying all that. I think Larry, we're talking about just removing where it's really alligator, putting in some gravel, we've got a base bid, or a bid item for leveling course, put that in, and then put a wearing course surface over the whole works, and we think we can save money that way on that particular project as well. But we do have award on the basis of the bid to see what worked, see if we can even reduce that cost.
And council, if you don't have any other concerns, I'll look for a motion to approve the Resolution 0724-54 with the add alternate number one.
Mr. Mayor, a question.
Yep.
The $60,000, is that included where I agent on top?
Yeah, it included milling and overlaying and then putting up wearing course over the whole thing, and we think we can come up with an alternative method to even save a little money off of that, Jed.
Okay. Any council thoughts?
Well, I hope this project goes really well. I'm not going to sit here and say that I support Masabi Bytunis, because I think they're all for two on projects in this town personally, but we need it, I support it, I hope it goes really well. I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Travis.
Second.
Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I'm so, if you'll turn to page 42, what we have, that I asked for, the SEH provided the feasibility study with the time specifications bidding to support this project, and what I asked them, from them, was a proposal for the construction services of the administration safety observation of that project, which they provided and done really well and passed for us. And as you see, the estimated cost is the maximum cost of $28,000, including expenses and equipment, built on an hourly basis. And with that, I would recommend approval of that professional services agreement with the SEH in the amount of not, maximum cost not to exceed $28,000. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. The last project that they did for us, I forget just exactly what their construction services cost was, but what actually got built based on the hourly basis is about half of what, it really depends on the efficiency of the operations, so they didn't do it one fault, two, we saved a lot of money for both the contractor and ourselves. Thank you.
Okay. Council, is there any questions?
I'd look for a motion to approve the agreement for professional construction services for 2024 street alley rehab project with SEH.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Jed.
Support.
Thank you, Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
It's part of our process of getting funding through the public facilities administration for our business health project, we have to go through and provide a application package. And as I tried to explain it in my request for council action and so forth, when we submitted that, we made a number of assumptions in terms of inflation rates for revenues and also for expenses, and as a result, as you see on page 55, or page 55, actually, we're in that last column, there's four years, and 25, 26, 27, and 28, when we end up with a short deficit. And that's not unusual for us. But what the PFA is looking for is this, the Resolution 0724-55, which indicates that public facilities administration loan monies will not be used to cover our operating deficit. And this is a normal procedure for us anyway, that we look at adjusting the rates each fall, going through the Public Utilities Commission, coming back to the council with new rates, or the transfer of funds to cover operating deficit. It's a normal operation for the city, but they requested this resolution to ensure that their loan monies weren't being used to cover our operating deficit. So with that, we have to answer the questions that you might have, but I would recommend approval of Resolution 0724-55.
Any suggestions, Mayor?
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, April.
Support.
Thank you, Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor. And then if you'll turn to page 57 and 58, several months ago, or over the past couple months, we have passed similar resolutions for the drinking water side and the clean water and sanitary sewer side in terms of supporting the funding application to Minnesota Public Facilities Administration. This is the third and final one, the lead service line, so it's pretty much that same standard one that we approved over the past couple months for drinking water and clean water, and I would ask for your support, and Mayor Men, that your approval of Resolution 0724-56.
Okay, council?
Have to answer any questions you might have.
I'll look for that motion.
Right, one more.
Thank you, Jed.
Support.
Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. And then if you'll turn to page 59, back to April, we approved the proposal from Brown InterTech to do the soil boring and prepare a geotechnical report for those projects that we've got in our five-year capital improvement program. And last week, I received the email from Brown InterTech Mark Arthur that's on page 60, indicating that it wasn't in the original proposal to have to do core boring through some old thick concrete pavement. And so they're requesting an amendment to that proposal for additional $3,511 to perform the gate concrete course on that. With that, I would recommend approval of that amendment in the amount of $3,511.
Thank you, Jim. And council, obviously, this is something that we need to follow through with, so I would look for a motion to approve the amendment to Brown InterTech contract on $3,511.
Where's the concrete, Jim?
Actually, I saw them on Second Avenue. It was south west today. Second Avenue was one of them. I don't remember if it's...
There's one right by the school, Jim, they were at, where it was...
Yeah, yes, on 5th Street also.
Yeah.
On portion of 5th Street, south of the school, I think that's all by King's School or lay over concrete pavement, if I remember. If I remember, I think even on 5th Street, I think that's by, by over concrete on that one as well. But they're all those old streets that we've got in our five-year capital improvement program right now, to try to do all of those at one time and save costs on utilization and so forth, and have it ready when those projects come up.
And he did break two augers, auger heads, sets here, so, yeah.
Old concrete is very...
Do we have a motion?
Some of those, but others is...
Not yet.
I'll make that motion as well.
Thank you, April.
Support.
Thank you, Jed.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Would you believe we're going to find out 3rd Street Northwest, so if it was change, or excuse me, 3rd page 62 and 63, these are all items now that we've been through in our work sessions and dealing with Masabi Bytunis on that 3rd Street Northwest project. First one here is change order number two, which revised the substantial completion date from August 23rd to October 1st. That was adjusted because of delays and weather and so forth, so it's part of our whole liquidated damages. So what this is doing is modifying the original contract documents such that the substantial comple, yes, substantial completion was revised from August 23rd to October 1st of 2021, and then the final completion date was delayed by one year from July 1st of 2022 to July 1st of 2023. With that, I would recommend approval of change order number two at all additional costs.
Okay, council, I'll look for a motion to approve that change order.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Marty.
Support.
Thank you, Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. And if you'll turn then to the next, pages 64 and 65, this is change order number three, this is based on our discussion and the decision by the council on April 10th in that work session to reduce liquidated damages. We were originally looking at $45,000, based on what we felt the actual costs were going to be due to the city. We cut that in half, the 15 days of liquidated damages, so it's just determining that liquidated damages will be at 22,500. With that, I would recommend approval of change order number three, answering questions that you might have.
Make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, April.
Support.
Thank you, Jed. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
True to page 66 and 67, change order number four. And what this is, we discussed is modifying again the contract documents, confirms of the warranty, warranty periods, I should say, that on the entire project, it got extended from one year to two years, and that will, if you approve it tonight, that's the date of approval starts tonight, so we've got two years on the entire project. And then the second component of that is the life warranty on those water services that were shallow, and that all begins as a pure approval, assuming that happens tonight. So with that, I would recommend approval of change order number four.
And council?
Make a motion.
Thank you, Travis.
Support.
Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion? Thank you, Jim, for all your work through this.
Oh, we're not, yeah.
Well, I was on this, I'm specific to this one right here, so... All those in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
True to page 68 and 69, this is just gotten that need case signed. This goes back to that change order number two, where we modified the contract that was to be done, read on August 23rd, done over one. They actually completed the work that constitutes substantial completion on November 5th, which was that 30 days that we were originally looking at in terms of the liquidated damages at $1,500 per day. And then the council's action on, in the vehicle, modified that liquidated damages, which is at your discretion, but all this is due to a signing off that we acknowledge that the data substantial completion was actually achieved on November 21st of 2021. With that, I would recommend its approval.
And council, unless there's any further questions, I'll look for a motion to approve the application number 11.
Nope.
Nope, there. I skipped one, certification, substantial completion.
I know, you want to give it?
I know.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Jed.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Jed.
Jed, I didn't, okay, there wasn't a second now.
No second?
Thought you were going to second it, Jim. Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Now, the 78 and 71, we have finally the application number 11. And this is the application number 10, what we were retaining at that point was what was being discussed at the $45,000 in liquidated damages. This simply because of our action on change order number three to reduce that retaining, or excuse me, liquidated damages, 22,500, this is the application completes that such that what is due and payable to the contractor is that 22,500, and we got subtracted, or reused by the liquidated damages of 22,500. So with that, I would recommend approval of final to the application number 11 in the amount of $22,500, that they have to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Jim.
Motion.
Thank you, Travis.
Second.
Thank you, April. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and council. And if you'll turn to page 73, we have paid about, the application number four for work completed in June on the 3rd Street South project. If I can just quickly, jumping over to pages 76 and 77, and actually starts on 75, if you look at the third, excuse me, third, the fourth, third, second, first box from the right edge, if you will, the quantity that was done this period and the amount in terms of cost for this period is listed there, so at near the bottom of page 76, you see the value of the work completed in June was $291,565.50. Alternate number one is that lead service line replacement on private property that we have to keep track of and will be invoicing PFA and so forth for that. What you see there is that we, and I don't remember exactly what the number, I think it's about seven, five or seven properties in there, where we replaced the lead service lines between the property line and the homes, and that would be in that area from Central Avenue to Second Avenue West, the two westerly blocks of the project. And then, so that makes what is top of page 77, between the base bid and the alternate the total worth... And then, so that makes what is top of page seventy-seven, between the base bit and the alternate, the total worth is had a value of three-hundred-four thousand nine-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars and fifty cents. You see the total to date, just to the right of that is seven-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand five-hundred-and-four dollars and twenty-seven cents. And then if you go to page seventy-eight, they show you what is the material that's on hand and that had been what reduced by seventy-eight thousand seven-hundred-and-sixty dollars because the one for materials on hand being installed back in the base bit. So remaining materials on hand is just that ninety-nine thousand five-hundred-and-forty-five dollars and thirty-eight cents, basically a hundred thousand dollars. So then if you'll choose, trip back to page seventy-four, we go through those same numbers, work completed, the date, what is that, seven-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand five-hundred-and-four dollars and twenty-seven cents. Material stored on hand yet is that ninety-nine thousand five hundred and five dash point thirty-eight, making the total value of work completed to date of eight-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand forty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents. We became the five percent to our forty-one thousand one-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars and forty-eight cents. The previous payments that you see was five-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand five-hundred-and-eleven dollars and fifty-six cents. So the payment due to this particular pay application number four is two-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand three-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars and eighty-one cents. I would recommend your approval of pay application number four for the Fifth Street South project, if you have to answer questions that you might have.
Thank you Jim. Hey Counsel, if there's no other questions, I'd look for a motion to approve pay application number four for the Fifth Street South Improvement Projects, amount of two-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand three-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars and eighty-one cents.
I just have a quick question.
Yeah, sure.
Jim, this is probably going to confuse me every time you come up here, the stored materials. I, I don't remember this ever being part of another project that I've, since I've been here. So didn't we approve already to pay for that? Why are we repaying for it?
It's based on materials that have been invoiced and are actually sitting on the castle site. You'll see there's a bunch of sanitary sewer, watergate pipe, hydrants and so forth. And that was what I was trying to do, point out on page seventy-eight was originally, I don't know when I see unit prices. I don't remember what that told the written, I'd have to go back and look at the original pay applications Travis. But during June, when those materials got taken out of being materials on site and actually got installed. And that's where the value of those materials on site reduced by seventy-eight thousand dollars, at seventy-eight thousand seven-hundred-and-sixty dollars. Last month, it must, must have been a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars approximately, the number of what, the amount remaining on page seventy-eight in that last column at the bottom, ninety-nine five forty-five. So last month, that number had to be about a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. So it went seventy-eight thousand dollars for the material per invoice, got transferred, removed from being materials on site. And now became installed materials through the base bit.
Yeah, and I, I understand, no, no, I, I totally, I understand and I'm following you. Where I'm struggling is if I'm not, correct me, maybe I'm wrong, but the last council meeting, we approved a lump sum for this material. Has that not been paid yet?
Yes, it's been paid.
But then why would we repay for it?
More material, is there more material coming on the site?
No.
No.
I mean, am I, am I totally crazy here? Or is this saying we're repaying for it? I mean, I'm just confused.
Just inventory, one says another, right, then you're just ticking.
This is a tracking.
This is just accounting.
Right.
This is, this is accounting. You're allowed to get paid for the material they bought and as they use it, that comes off the payment.
Right. And that's where it's reduced by seventy-eight thousand dollars this month.
Yeah, this is a deduction off the contract.
Right.
It will eventually go to zero, but then they'll get paid their full unit price for the material installation.
Then, if you go back to page seventy-four, under the work completed. That is that value that increased by the three-hundred-four thousand dollars. Last month, the stored materials would have been, like I said, about a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. So it's just accounting of moving the materials on site per invoice of materials as installed with on the base bit. And like I said, each pay application, we're adding both of those as to what was actually converted, reducing the material that's on site and that's a more broad area.
It's just accounting moving it over.
So they're not, we're not double paying at all?
Okay. This is, I trust you. It's so hard to understand. It makes most, it makes absolutely zero sense to me because if anyone, I don't know, maybe I'm the only one, but if we already paid them for the material, why would we then have to turn around and on this two-twenty-six? The ninety-nine thousand is included in there.
But instead of feet of pipe, it's listed in dollars. But it's also part of for previous payments because we did pay for it. Basically, what's happening is we're paying them actually, it's coming out of materials on site, which was the, what did I say?
So all the materials, here's a question for you. So all the materials that have, are included in the five-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand that they've already got in their hand?
Yeah, we're paying, we're just paying the difference. What, what we're deducting in terms of the materials on hand comes back a little bit more expensive because it's installed back up in the base bit. So we're subtracting on the materials on hand, but adding on the base bit. The total of those two are the total work and materials on site at that point. And because of the previous payment, yes, we had already paid for that materials on site. So really, all we're doing this pay application is paying for stuff that was installed, whether it was material on site or not. If it was materials on site, it got, it gets deducted.
All right, well, I'll come argue with you tomorrow.
Travis.
But for the sake of everyone else here, I cannot argue tomorrow. I'll just.
Think of it this way. They got, the job is based on buying material and putting it in there. So they bought all that material and we partially paid them for that. As they take it out of that yard and go put it in, we're taking that money back. That's why it's negative numbers. That's eventually going to go down to zero. So it's just like a temporary holding pot for all that material. But then they turn around and get paid the full amount for the material installation. Basically, instead of having them have to carry the cost of buying that material and having to sit there for months, we gave them money upfront to help cover that. And as they take it and use it, we take the money back and that goes back down to zero.
Eventually, the materials on hand.
Go back to zero. So we, that's why we had some parentheses and a negative, we're taking that money back. But then they turn around and get paid their full contract price.
Which I, I understand that.
We're not, we're not double paying. Apparently, the contract allows for that. It does make it confusing a lot.
This is very confusing, I'll still come argue with you Jim.
Make a motion, I hear you tomorrow, you got to do an extra ninety weeks. Sounds good.
Thank you Jed.
I'll argue with you, Tracer.
I will.
Anytime, twenty-four hours a day.
Twenty-four, seven days a week.
Twenty-four, seven.
So we got a motion by Jed? Is there support?
Call second.
Thank you Marty. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. And finally, page seventy-nine, eight, and eighty-one, we have the application number sixteen for a public safety bill. And if you'll turn to page eighty-one, scroll through the same. Common process for you, as you see, the common sheet, they've got working table today. All of these items above my double line, as you see, I've got written, it's completed at seven-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand eighty-nine dollars and sixty cents. That's where we take, multiply it by one and three-quarters percent, which is the management fee for Aleson Peterson, which you actually see, but can't read now, just don't know that, but that number is two-thousand seven-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars and fifty cents. That we'll look at when we get back to the cover sheet. And then if you go over to the total work completed to date, where we calculate the retainage, all those items that I have within the brackets, which are reading the labor and material costs for the project, as you see, that I've got written in at the bottom, is eight million three-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand five-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars and sixty cents. Although the total completed to date, as you see right above that, is ten million two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand three-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents. But taking that eight-point-three-nine-nine million dollars times the five percent from the German retainage, is where we come up with four-hundred-and-nineteen thousand nine-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars and thirty-three cents. So then if you'll go back to these, one page to page eighty, on that left-hand side, our original contract is eleven-one, one-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand nine-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars. That total to date that we just talked about in column I, the total work completed to date is ten million two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand three-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents. Though that, if you see the retainage that we just calculated, is four-hundred-and-nineteen thousand nine-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars and thirty-three cents. So the total less that retainage is nine million eight-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand three-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars and sixty-five cents. And so the previous payments, which are, I need to read them out as well, that number is nine million six-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand one-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars and thirty-six cents. Such that the current payment due is a hundred-and-fifty-three thousand two-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents. Going back above item number four, that ten million two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand three-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents represents about ninety-one and a half percent of that eleven-one, one-nine-nine contract. With that, I would ask that answering any questions that you might have, but would recommend approval of the application, let's say.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, in the amount of five-two-thousand two-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Thank you Jim. Again, it's gonna be sad when this project's over because this was very nice to follow. So Counsel, I would look for a motion to approve the application.
Thank you Jim, appreciate it. I'll make the motion.
Thank you Travis.
Support.
Thank you Jed. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Good job Jim.
Now show this.
Thank you.
Show this to TNT so I can follow it.
All right, Larry.
Follow that. Follow that, man. Everything else is boring. I will, I will speed right along and ask for the council support to designate hiring committee for the L B buildings and parks person. And Bridget, and with schedule, and following, so Katie and Bridget, also they would help, so. I would ask for your support.
And Counsel, I'll look for a motion to approve the designation of the hiring committee, Larry, I'm sorry, Bridget and Katie.
Motion.
Thank you Travis.
Second.
Thank you April. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you Counsel, and then annually, we, we go, you know, our sewer manhole rebuilds, these are these, you know, the structures that are, you know, somewhere over a hundred years old and they rebuilt from the inside out, so. And we quoted this this year and, and I would ask for your support to award HydroClean in the amount of twenty-six thousand eight-hundred-and-twenty dollars. And it was competitively good, as proved by the PUC Commission on six-twenty-six, and it's budgeted.
Thank you Larry. Counsel, I'll look for a motion?
Make a motion.
Thank you Jed.
Second.
Thank you April. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Then anybody Phil, Norvage, with the North St. Louis County Soil and Water Conservation District. And I believe Counselor Hallaw, was the initial contact that made that big suggestion that we reach out to Phil, so. Phil, I'll let you, I'll introduce him by name, but I would like him to explain the program and, and his profession and what he does and why he moved himself, so I appreciate you coming in.
Thank you Mayor Lance and the counselors, so yeah, I appreciate all your staff, patience, what a great community I've had here. Really, it's been a pleasure to work with everybody here, so, yeah, what we have already know is my office was involved with a major watershed, water plan essentially, so that's with the St. Louis River watershed. We're involved with St. Louis County, Lake County, Carlton County, and the Soil and Water Conservation Districts within those, district, or county companies, I should say. Right now, we have clean water fund money available and what our priorities in our plan was to do stormwater planning with municipalities. With the recent flooding and past flooding in recent years that has occurred, talking with Larry and others, we feel this would be an opportunity for the community to take a look at where could we possibly plan some projects to reduce those peak flood events. It will fix every problem in the city, probably not, but ideally, we might be able to limit some of the damages done in some of these, you know, big aid and drain outlets that I don't think we've ever seen in the past and in the common terms in the last thirty, forty years, so. Anyways, my office right now has ninety thousand dollars, or actually ninety thousand dollars available to, you know, consult out a large management plan. We are able to fund up to a maximum of ninety-five percent of that, that's what my board is authorized to offer. And so, yes, I will leave it for any questions that you might have for me. Thank you.
Thank you Phil. Thank you Counsel. Anything you would like to add on to that? I mean, obviously, this would be a great opportunity for us to capitalize on. Does anyone have any other questions for Phil? Are any questions at all? Thank you very much for coming, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Hey Counsel, I would look for a motion to authorize us into, enter into agreement with North St. Louis County Soil and Water Conservation District for a stormwater plan for the city.
Make a motion.
Thank you Jed.
Second.
Thank you April. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you Phil.
I want to thank you again Counsel for, for this opportunity, but Phil, we don't have a stormwater professional, right, with the recent flooding. I felt I could give a big speech about what Phil does, why we need him, but with the recent flooding, I think it's, I think it's out of the line. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks. Bridget. Welcome back.
Thank you. I have a paper, two, I believe, in your packet with some requests. The first one is requesting the enter of contract with Eric Carlson for Redhead Mountain Bike Construction Management, work on the LCCMR project. It's like a trail build-out portion of the LCCMR project. We, it's funded through the LCCMR at sixty-two thousand five hundred, and I'm requesting to contract with council not to exceed sixty-five-five. And that's in case, we need to extend the deadline if, if the trails didn't, you know, there's some flooding or something happens and we need to push it into twenty-twenty-six, just to give a little bit of cushion. But more than likely, the completion of this project will be to twenty-twenty-five and it'll probably, will probably have less hours than the sixty-two thousand five hundred that's allocated from LCCMR for construction management. And that's at a rate of seventy-five dollars, seventy-five dollars an hourly rate.
Question? Um, did we contract with this gentleman like a couple, like a month ago or two months ago?
Yes, so he.
What was that for?
He's currently in contract with City of Chisum for maintenance. So he is physically, he, he's knowledgeable enough on mountain bike trail building that he does, he's worked in his own company, he's worked for Rock Solid, other mountain bike building companies, mountain bike trail building companies. But he has enough expertise to be the construction manager on this site, on this project. He has the most intimate knowledge of Redhead, of, of anybody probably in the region. He has the most intimate knowledge of Redhead, of anybody probably in the region. And even like, if you think about, you know, who knows Redhead really well in, in our area? It would be probably Pete Carroll, probably Martin Elversen. But they don't have the capacity or the ability to be a construction manager. In the past, when Redhead was built out, we contracted with Scott Minimer out of Colorado. I think it's wonderful that we have somebody with enough expertise to manage this project fully. So that's why we would be in two different contracts with him. This is at a different hourly rate than him doing the actual physical trail maintenance. That's at sixty dollars an hour. So it's two separate contracts, two separate scopes of work, but he, he would be completing, you know, timesheets separately for the different work that he's doing.
Thank you for explaining that. I appreciate that. Thank you.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Travis. Support. Thank you, Jed. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
On page one six, we have another contract and that is with Rock Solid for the, they're the second trail builder that I'm requesting to enter the contract with, the LCCMR trail building. The first one, I came to last, at the last meeting, that was a smaller trail building company and they had a very small amount of trails that, that we assigned in for them to use. Rock Solid has a larger capacity, has more experience at Redhead, so we did choose them for the large section trails. This amount, it will come into the neighborhood of six hundred, or six hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars. And the LCCMR will grant, will cover the entirety of, of this amount.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, April. Council second. Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
And thank you. On page one point six, I'm asking for approval to, to, well, everything, right? It's two different, I mean, it's enough to do. And one is to update the job description and the update on it, and this is for the youth center. The update on it is to change the pay rate. So it's an increase of the scale from thirteen dollars and, can't think now, at fifteen fifty to fourteen dollars, can't think now, at sixteen fifty for the youth center job description attached there.
Okay, council, I'll look for a motion to approve the updated youth center attendant job description.
Motion.
Who's that?
Motion.
Thank you, Travis.
Support.
Thank you, Jed. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
And the posting for this position is on page one thirty-nine. Nine, I'm requesting to post be attached.
For three youth center attendants?
For up to three, correct.
And council, I'll look for a motion to approve the posting for the youth center attendants.
Make a motion.
Thank you, April.
Support.
Thank you, Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
And then I'm requesting to hire up to three.
Okay, council.
Can you just let us know the reasoning why you would like to hire three, in case somebody's absent or say?
Yeah, well, yeah, I think historically, they've had three, ideally in that position. We've had a hard time filling three positions, so we've had two for the last couple of years. I'd love to see three in there. The variety of staff could bring in a variety of different kids to the center. A variety of staff can add a variety of personalities and skills and different interests, which diversify what the kids are experiencing while they're there. So three would be ideal, so please share that we're posting for this position. It's minimal, part-time, but it's a, it's a good way to get out and be with you and the community.
Thank you.
Motion.
Thank you, Travis.
Support.
Thank you, Jed. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Bridget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go on, Sean.
Katie.
Shout out to Lunch Punch. So on page one forty-two, just looking to about the resolution to accept a monetary donation of two hundred and fifty dollars through a earmark for the Chisholm Library. Lunch Punch is a great group, and she's, and they've been a huge supporter of the library for many years, so. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you to them. And council, I'd look for a motion to approve resolutions, drill seven two four dash five seven, and send a thank you to Lunch Punch. I'm sure you read that.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, April.
Second.
Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian, good evening, Mayor. I bet, I don't know if it's good news or bad news, but I have some news on blight. So what I've got, council, for you tonight, just as an update, I'll give you, just, I'll start by giving you some statistics. I brought some of the work product related to blight. So what I did was, I went to, I've got a couple of banker boxes full of blight files from the City of Chisholm. Some are older, some are, some are newer, but I grabbed just a handful so you can see what, as I received these, and these are the files prior to going into litigation, just to kind of show you what those files look like. Our statistics, recent files, so I went back about eighteen months. In the last eighteen months, for criminal court, in, in, actually in court, we've had ten files. Of those ten files, there were a couple of folks that had multiple citations because they were more habitual offenders, and we were trying to put some pressure on them to, to move along. Of those ten files, we've currently got one that's set for jury trial that I'm trying to hang on to and bring forward. And then we have one, one home property owner in the city who's taken a bold strategy and he's out of warrant status. So the courts have actually issued a warrant for his arrest to bring him in to answer all these charges. Aside from that, I've been in communication with, with Chief Manor and the PD. And obviously, we received, I think the council received a letter from the chief that's kind of expressed some of the challenges that he's had in getting through the normal, what they, what I refer to as the blight sweeps, but they go through and make multiple contacts. But even with the challenges that the chief and his crew face, they've still got thirty properties that, for which they've made contacts and the process has started. I've been in contact with the chief. We've got, the chief, I believe, has identified a handful, about five, five properties that have been habitual over the past several years, causing a good, a good deal of problems with blight in the city. And we're going to send out the notice letters and start the civil processes on those. It's very likely that I'll be coming back to the council, asking for some additional authority to file, because it will cost some cash to file those. But we're going to get the process rolling with the initial notices that we're at the point where those files, I believe, have been identified and I've got to get the, the letter out so we can make contact with those folks. But I did bring, and I can pass around, or, or it's be available after the council meeting, this handful of files. And then I've also brought some of the court dockets and what we call the registers of action, which show the number of hearings and kind of short summaries of what happens with those, so that the council can see how many hearings each of these files are receiving before there's some disposition of them. And at the end, a lot of times, the files end up getting dismissed. So I, but I want, I want the council to know that it's not for lack of effort or pursuit, especially on the part of the, the PD and Vern and his, and his staff down there. They do a fantastic job, and I'm speaking experience range-wide. They do a fantastic job of staying on top of it, getting the information and the files that you'll be able to review will show that the quality of information, I could take, I could pick any one of these files up right now and go try the case tomorrow. They're very well put together, so. Questions for me? Thank you for that.
Can I just add one thing to that, too? Just, I know we had talked about the blight on the council of different levels, so I wanted Brian to report on where he's coming from the criminal side, but then also, I've had conversations with Jen, and she did put out the, recently to help the citizens, because I know we were talking about doing different facets of what it would look like to clean up blight in the community. So obviously, one is what Attorney Lindsay does for us, another one is what our PD does. But then we talked about the community group, so I did have touch base with her on, like, what would that look like? How could the community help? She has graciously offered to, to help with that. So those citizens that we've talked about before, like, they just can't, they just don't have the capability to be able to clean up their yards. We do have a group now, so if the PD does say, you know, that's the feedback that they're getting, we do have someone that they can direct them to. So I just wanted to make that a point to that. We're trying to look at the different pieces of, okay, we have the criminal side, we have the, what the police are, obviously are doing, and then just the local grassroots cleanup committee too. So we are trying to, to look at it from all angles.
No, I was just kind of, I mean, obviously, different, different avenues of approach. And at what point, when someone just doesn't want to, can we legally go in there and do it? I mean, obviously, if I'm a neighbor, if I'm a property owner and I have to look at, you know, an unpleasant view every day, and it is blight, it's been determined by, by our PD, they've refused help or service, at what point can we legally just go on there and remove what we believe to be trash, whereas somebody else's rights towards their house is their property and they don't see it as trash? You know, I, obviously, that's going to be a tricky line, too.
It's, Mayor, that is, that's a very tricky line, and we've got to be careful with that line. The point, the answer to the question, the civil process, the nuisance claims, that is where we will gain some authority to do that. And the way that we'll gain that authority is when, when the court makes a finding of nuisance, it will find specific things as nuisance and it will give us some guidance on what can be taken out, what can be cleaned up. And then that order, if they don't immediately abide by it or within a reasonable time, come into compliance with that order, we use the civil contempt process, and it's called an order to show cause hearing, and then the contempt process, and that process will give some authority to the city to go on. The other way that we can gain some of that authority is if the property becomes so bad that it's a hazard to health and safety, there's some additional procedures that we can use that follow a bit of a different route.
Okay, now, you mentioned somebody that is actually choosing to not go to court, they have warrants out. At what point can we go to the judge and say, you know, they're not actually coming here, how are we supposed to deal with this if the person decides not to?
If, if their property is one that's, and I don't believe that it is, but if it, if it were to be one that's identified as, as warranting a, and no pun intended, warranting the civil, the civil nuisance process, essentially what would happen is they would default. And once they default, we could take a default judgment to the court and it would kind of, it would short circuit, and I shouldn't say short circuit, it would, it would create a summary process where we can get to that end result a lot quicker.
I will say what a terrible waste of time and effort to have to do this, but obviously, it's things that we have to do, so. Any other questions, input?
So Brian, so I was looking through this ordinance, ninety-four one oh five, it was last time, a change in twenty, in March of twenty twenty. So do we need to change the ordinance, because the penalty is a misdemeanor? I'm all for like impounding yourself if we have to, because this is getting ridiculous.
So we've got to, Mayor, if I may, we've got to be careful, as, as a, as a city, generally the highest level of offense that we can create through ordinance is a misdemeanor.
Well, we've got people parking their front yards, parking their side yards. It's against this ordinance.
Yes, and we do have, there is a process in place, and there's actually a Minnesota state statute that, that covers the, the nuisance parking. You, you've got to issue so many tickets before you can gain a right to tow. So, and, and actually, the chief is probably a lot more up on that than I am. I know the statute exists and I've, I've been through it a couple of times, but usually it doesn't get to me until we're right at the point and then I'll review it. But there is a state statute that dictates when we can and when we can't tow, and when we do tow, it dictates that there's a creation of a paper trail, a lot of information that has to go along with that. It actually is administratively a little bit burdensome to tow a vehicle.
But it's worth it in my eyes to start cleaning up, so if we've got some rest, it's just going to have to happen, you know?
And Mayor, if I may, just comment, one, one more comment briefly, and, and council, I think you're, you're on the right track. While it may be burdensome, I think once you start hitting a couple of these properties with the civil procedure, with the order to show cause proceedings, and when it really starts to show that, that it's going to happen one way or another, I'm hopeful that others will kind of get the word on the street and start cleaning up a little bit more. It's not a guarantee, and, and there's some, there's some properties, just even in this stack here, I'm not sure it matters what we do, they're going to just leave it as is, but we'll keep trying.
So Brian, is it a, I assume a daily ticket? So, I mean, they have to get one every day for so many days in order to qualify for the tow?
Yeah, you have to have, there has to be, and don't quote me, I want to say it's like three or four violations, but blight is, is, I think we've talked about it before, blight is what's known as a continuing violation, so each day that it exists is a separate offense.
Okay. Anything else for Brian?
Thank you for the somber update, Brian. I wish it was better news.
We're going to kill the mood after Jim just set it up for everybody. Have a nice night. But thank you. I mean, obviously, it's a serious issue and I do feel bad for the citizens and community that do have to deal with, you know, the unfortunate neighbors. Stephanie, CTC Network enhancement update?
Um, we have, I've been working with Marcus that we, his counsel agrees to work with for some of our IT, and his recommendation, which I also do, was to have CTC to take over some of the firewalls, so then we'd have consistency throughout the city. So this contract is to be able to, for CTC to manage the switches at both the public safety building and the city hall, and our wireless at both sites, too. Three seventy-nine fifty is the monthly total on that.
Four eighty-nine. Let's see what.
No, it's just.
I have the wrong one?
The lesser prices.
Lesser price, okay. Perfect. Oh, good news, looking, saving money, right?
Yeah, trying.
All right, council, I'd look for a motion to approve the agreement with CTC enhancements.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Jed. Thank you, Travis.
And they've been great to work, to say that.
Good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
I received a letter from Bill Purdy that is looking at no longer having the contract with the laundry mats that the city owns at the campground. He does have somebody interested to take over that lease agreement, Ben Masusi, and we did, I talked to Brian, approved by council today, we can forward that, we revise the contract and change that over. I support this, I'll change.
And council, and obviously, thank you, Travis.
Second.
Thank you, April. Any further discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Moving on to the Chisholm Area Chamber request for Doc Moonlight Graham Days. As you can see, the attached request for the area chamber for road closures, barricades, and any kind of services for Doc Moonlight Graham Days. Letter from the chamber, asking to block off Lake Street for the parade, ten, ten AM to one thirty PM. See, there was more of a time in there, wasn't there? Seven times as she wants, just so it's ten AM.
Ten, three thirty.
Okay.
Um, I don't think that's accurate.
Yeah, I was going to say.
I think it's, I think it's, we've locked off till like four thirty would be my best, because there's a car show after, there's bouncing around downtown after.
Car show's one thirty to three thirty.
Yeah.
I'd say four thirty to be safe.
The thing is that, that the main corridor gets opened up.
It does, right? Snickers down.
Yeah. The normal two blocks.
Yeah. That, that part is true.
And council, so let's look for a motion to approve the road closure for Chisholm Area Chamber Commerce, Doc Moonlight Graham Days, August third, Saturday, from, just call it eight AM to four thirty PM. call it eight AM to four-thirty PM.
Yeah.
Good.
Motion.
Thank you, Travis.
Support.
Thank you, Marty. Do we need to make this a citywide festival?
Yeah.
Probably wouldn't hurt. Probably wouldn't hurt, right? Yeah.
So, would you like to amend your motion?
I will amend my motion to include it as a citywide festival.
Thank you, Travis. Marty, still good for a second?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next, schedule a joint meeting with Chisholm Hiving Airport Authority, August nineteenth at six PM. This is what we, we have this meeting every year. I'll look for that motion.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Jed.
Support.
Thank you, Travis. Any further discussion? We do need a forum at this meeting, so if you're unable to attend, please reach out to Susan so we can. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next is a temporary liquor license for the Saint Basil Serbian Orthodox Church. I talked to Vern, obviously, this one looks a little different than all they normally come, but I did talk to Vern before the meeting, he said everything is in line.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Travis.
Support.
Thank you, Jed. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And schedule a special meeting for improvements to the arena. Another great meeting to be part of. Counselor, I believe Stephanie said the best week for her would be the week of July twenty-second?
Yes.
Okay, that's not the week again. How does Monday sound, the twenty-second?
Monday was probably the best day for me.
That week. That works.
Could be, like, quarter after seven, is that too late?
It's getting pretty late.
Got a clinical in Virginia that day.
Okay. We were able to breast you later, bring you up to speed. Would that be all right?
Sure, that's fine, too, yeah.
Yeah. April, how's that work for you?
Good.
Okay. All right, so I'll look for a motion. How's five PM on Monday? Is that too early?
No, it's good. Works for me.
April's about to say something.
Little bit, little bit after, I'll, I'll be here-
Five-thirty?
No, no, oh, no, I'll be here a little bit after five.
Okay.
But I'll be here.
All right, so I'll look for a motion for July twenty-second, five PM.
Okay. I'll make it, motion.
Thank you, Travis. Is there support?
Support. It's April.
Is that April? Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, April. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to Marty. Good evening, Marty.
Good evening. So, I'm requesting use of some orange cones from Public Works to just block off the parking area in front of my house on Saturday, July twentieth. There'll be live music from three to eight PM, and I'll probably set those cones up in that morning and have them down by sundown.
Hurry up, Marty.
Yes.
Hurry.
Everybody is welcome.
Well, I like it.
Okay. And all of you can show up, and if I could get them on Friday, the nineteenth, and I'll have them set up Saturday morning.
That's good. Look for a motion.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Jed. Thank you, April. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
What if there's a few of us counselors that wanted to go?
Everyone's welcome. Everyone is welcome.
Do we have to make it, uh, no, just don't talk to each other? Okay.
Just don't talk to each other. There's more than, you gotta stand more than ten years.
Yeah. Just stand away from each other.
I'll be over town that day, so.
There's nothing for everybody to spread.
Right, it's like, just don't go.
It, it could be considered a chance social gathering or chance social meeting. If there's any concern about it at all, you could always note it as a working session.